Regular meeting after our executive session and the first order of business will be I'll entertain a motion on the first item.
I move to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement with the Oregon Military Department to purchase armor, the armory located at 350 West Maple known as the Armory Building for 340, it was 340,000, excuse me.
Second up. It's been moved and seconded to approve $340,000 for the Oregon Military Department's Armory. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Oh, okay. Okay, before we actually take the vote then, we'll go ahead and have discussion. I'm sorry, I didn't give us a discussion time. Is there any discussion? And this, would you like to just give a synopsis of what it is for the people who weren't here?
Sure, let me see if I can do this, if I'm on. So, this is a building, the Armory that. I don't, I don't know that I can get it a lot closer. This is for the purchase of the Armory Building from the Oregon Military Department. This is a building that is located on the backside of the current Public Works compound. The rest of the Public Works compound has been acquired from OMD. And this building, the state has now declared surplus and will be added to the Public Works facilities. They will be doing an assessment of the property once they acquire it and determine the best use for it. They need it for offices, but it also is a large internal garage where they could park things like the vectors and the street sweepers and not have them freeze in the wintertime and not have to drain tanks. So, some benefit for either office, equipment, storage, or a little bit of both. And this will, will let us acquire that parcel.
Okay. Any other discussion on council? Okay, seen none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Motion passes. And next up, we have the second item. And that is for the purchase and sales agreement for the City of Albany to purchase a vacant parcel north of River Park for $65,000.
You want to do next place or you want the?
We'll, we'll take a motion first.
Okay. I moved to authorize the city manager to sign the purchase and sales agreement with the City of Albany to purchase the vacant parcel north of River Parks for $65,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the $65,000 for the River Park location. Discussion amongst council? Would you like to?
Sure, this is a vacant parcel that directly abuts River Park on the north edge. It's roughly triangular shape, although there is a part, a part of the parcel that is across the river. It, it is landlocked, there is no road access to the parcel. It is something that the City of Albany has declared surplus, they no longer need it. At, at one point, they had a water intake unit on the river at that location. They have taken our offer of $65,000, it had an appraised value of 70. This will be added then to River Park and we'll be working with Build Lebanon Trails to put some trails through that parcel and see what else can happen with it. So, it's good acquisition for our park system and adding more green space.
Okay, any discussion on council? Seen none, and we'll go ahead and take the vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The motion passes. Thank you. Okay, next up is kind of out of order, but you'll please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the clerk call roll, please.
Counselor Steinhebel?
Here.
Counselor Dykstra?
Here.
Counselor Nusar?
Here.
Counselor Reese Camp is absent. Counselor Salvage?
Here.
Counselor Olferz?
Here.
Thank you. Okay, first up, we have the consent calendar, and I'll just briefly go over that. We have the Lebanon City Council Agenda from November 9th. Shyla Malloy will be appointed to the Planning Commission. Library Advisory Committee Meeting, Parks, Trees, Trails Advisory Committee Meeting, Planning Commission, these are all minutes. October 12th, Work Session and Regular Session. Lynn Lane's Family Entertainment, Full On-Premise Commercial Change of Ownership, and the Coon Cinema Limited On-Premises New Outlet. Take a motion?
Move to approve Consent Calendar.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Consent Calendar for this evening. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent Calendar is passed. First up, we have the Lebanon Downtown Association Third Quarter Update.
I should promise, all the documents received, I am not going to go over all those. That was just for your reading pleasure, so you have an idea of what the scope of what it really was in depth. So, please don't think that I am literally going to go over that many pages and just going to hit the slideshow and I'm going to get myself together. So, no worries there. Yeah, so this is the Third Quarter Update. We had a lot go on for this last quarter. Oh, maybe I got this. Maybe I don't. Technical difficult, no worries. Technical difficulties, not taken care of. So, yeah, so I'm just going to quickly just kind of go over five different points. We're going to look at what happened in the quarter, third quarter events, just kind of reflect on back on that. Look at the tourism that each of those events brought, or the cumulative number that those events brought. And then, look at the volunteerism behind those events, because as it takes, and all of us know, a lot more people than just four or five to put these things forward. And then, we're also going to look at the. What happened in the quarter, third quarter events, just kind of reflect on back on that. Look at the tour. I hate hearing myself. That was terrible. Okay. And then, we're going to look at the Oregon Main Street Conference. That actually happened earlier last month, but I feel like that information is so fresh. I just kind of want to touch on that rather than waiting for that yearly report that I'll do come, I think, February. And then, also from, that also kind of came from the third quarter and a little bit into this last month, was our Upper Floor Study Inventory that the city actually and the LDA had kind of worked with in partnership with the Oregon Heritage and University of Oregon Research Team for Public Policy. So, we've had a lot of opportunity just in the last few months to make a lot of things happen for our community that has really gotten us state recognition across the board, which is excellent, even as educators providing items to other main streets that are happening. All right, so our third quarter events. Of course, you know, this is demoralizing during the summertime for us. So, we had our Summer Concert Series, which includes Summer Bands and Brews and Concerts in the Park. Those have just grown over the last few years. I have to say, you know, it's interesting who you bring in, because it's what really draws the crowd a lot of times. And so, you really get a really diverse mix of individuals that come through, especially with our concert series. You know, it's not just one genre of music. We bring in a lot, we bring in things to attract all people, which is great. And of course, we have our Art and Wine Walk that we put on every year that draws a lot of individuals. I was kind of sad, I was, I sadly missed this last one, and that has had kind of record numbers for us. And we saw groups that were, you know, usually it's just maybe if someone going down with their friends, but what we saw were like groups of people, like, like 10, like friends and families like coming together for these events. So, they're just slowly growing, which is really adding to the economic vitality of our downtown, which is excellent. And then, of course, we have our First Fridays. We have, most of our First Fridays are really just kind of geared towards our kids, to give people, you know, our families things to do in our community. So, we've had the Art and Chalk Walk, that went really well. That was over 4th of July. Always kind of a hard weekend to get people to come out. For some reason, everyone wants to go to the lake. And I'm like, hey, downtown. And then, of course, we had our Flashback Classic Cars that brought amazing, beautiful cars into our downtown area. Kind of honestly remind me a little bit of when we had the Mayor's Conference. And we had a lot of people come for that. We had the car show for that one, too. It was just, you had the same kind of vibe, like the same feeling. So, that was really huge, the first time we ever done that. And of course, we had it Harry Potter themed. And how these events kind of come about is that we have businesses in our downtown that pair well with these events. So, Harry Potter was built off of the Lebanon Mercantile. If you've not been in there, go in there, I mean, for any reason, but especially if you're a Harry Potter fan. You know, you can find that cool wand they talk about, or the cloaks that they wear to be part of your, whatever Hogwarts, whatever class that you're a part of, excuse me, you can tell I'm not as an avid Harry Potter person as other people are. I know, I'm sad. But, we have a lot of people coming into this community, and we saw people coming in from out of the community, especially with the classic cars and Harry Potter, because it asked, offered something different that other communities either haven't tried, or just maybe because of how well we've been positioned, that we can try this. I should also say that with the Harry Potter, we had Beauty's Bountiful Books that really was instrumental in making that happen, too, a bookstore, having Harry Potter makes sense, me being part of that. And of course, you know, having the flashback classic cars, that was also helped with Christie's Cafe, because that's just a really great match. So, we really look to really help utilize and leverage the businesses we have downtown and the events that we can bring to really kind of help promote that. So, the Summer Concert Series, that's just a list of the bands that we had brought down. Like I said, that's just from July to August, and just some photos there for you guys can kind of take in. The far right-hand photo is, is that there in Ralston Park. And you can see, if you have ever been there in the past, that event is just, it keeps growing. It did really, really great, I would say, pre-pandemic, and of course, we just have had to build. And it feels like now that everyone can come back out together, you have people wanting to congregate and have fun. You know, bringing their picnics, bringing their, their takeout food, like this is totally a time for family. So, that kind of lists them. And of course, our First Fridays, I just kind of wanted to give you guys a touch on that, too. That's just some pictures of that. The far right there is from the, is from the 50's flashback. It's actually pretty funny, what I like to see, and I'm sure that all of us have just enjoyed. We've enjoyed seeing our families grow through the years. The picture that has the 1359. Met the store owner, Ira, that's her daughter there. And there's literally a photo of her daughter when she was doing another downtown event, First Fridays, when she was like three. And so, for this event, I saw the same cutout, I'm like, I need to get a picture of you. And it just kind of just is a testament to that growth into events and the year-over-year fund that we have. Of course, we have the Chalk and Art Walk right there, and then there's just more of that. Like I said, the 50's Car Cafe, and just bringing one out, and there's a few cars there you can see, too. And these are just photos from the Art and Wine Walk, that's just a few of them that I was able to put up on screen. We were able to sit there and also to auction off some of the art boards. And we've actually acquired a few of them for sale, so that went really well. We're looking to really try to continue to incorporate and be able to have those really nice, kind of finer events for our downtown area that can help, you know, local, local artists be kind of, to display their art out to the greater community, maybe for the first time for some of them. And actually, I was really happy, if you've ever seen, oh, excuse me, I'm trying to, I lost a name, so I'm not going to even try to garner it, but we've had a lot of different people come through that has just been amazing. So, that's just kind of a few photos there of just people, of the groups that I talked about earlier, just that had came together and had a good time, where before, we didn't have the people like that big, it was maybe one or two. But now, it's something people are coordinating their schedules around and coming together as family and friends. All right, so, with all that said, we're going to talk about the people that have come into downtown and spent dollars. I will preface to say that I did transpose some numbers, so I will be correcting just to you guys just verbally on that, because I don't have it in the slide, so I'll let you know. But, to kind of go into what you're seeing there is that, that you see is right there what it is, that when we have events like First Fridays, or whatever they may be, they bring people into the stores or into the restaurants. And so, people sometimes are having a first-time look at some of the stores and some of the restaurants that we have downtown. Being the city that people usually drive through, that, you know, they don't stop. Sometimes, we're coming home from work from Albany, Corvallis, or wherever it may be. You know, they kind of just want to get to the next step, which is dinner, and possibly, you know, someone happy to see them. So, this gives people maybe a first-hand look at this, and it's, and so, people do end up spending a lot of money, whether it's just going out to eat or buying something that they were looking for, they didn't know they were looking for, I should say. All right, oh goodness, I don't even have my stuff in front of me, so it's up there. So, overall, what you guys can kind of see there is kind of the percentage of the visitors broken down by location. And what I have to say I'm pretty happy about, I think it was last quarter, we were down, we were like 51% for people we were capturing, keeping, that were locally, that were staying here for attending our events and only bringing in a portion from out of the area. But considering how high gas prices were, we were only up like 55% of our visitors were still locals. We were still capturing people from around the area, whether it was Albany wanting to be here for First Friday or the Concert Series, people from Corvallis were coming up. I believe we had several people came up from Eugene, because they had heard of some of our events, and they want to take part in them, because they just had sound fun. And I'm really kind of speaking to that Hogwarts First Friday, because it was such a unique experience that most people haven't even had an opportunity in their area. And then, what that translates into dollars. So, what you have over there, a year-over-year dollar spent, you have Quarter 3 of 2021 on top, and Quarter 3 for 2022. And each of those shows a number of the people that were brought in and their approximate dollars that was spent. For, that was based on, of course, the Oregon Main Street, about $20 per person. So, people go out to eat, they buy an item, they kind of, that's how they break that down. And then, oh, wait, can we go back one? And sorry, oh, that's where it was. So, I have to apologize, that's why somebody transposed. I forgot I combined two slides rather than, combined two things rather than making two slides. So, oh, I guess I don't have that on the one, sorry, I guess, go ahead, Erin. I got myself mixed up, thank you. So, this is, my, my miss error was in the volunteerism, so not the people coming to visit. So, yeah, so it takes, teamwork does make the dream work, we know this as a community. The reason why I chose that photo, because it just shows what it takes for community to come together, to be recognized. It takes a lot, you know, we've had other awards that we've seen, they've been due to other people's revitalization projects, which benefits, you know, benefits us as a whole, because it makes our downtown look better. But, when we have, bring all of us and collaborate together, that speaks to us as a community, and it speaks volumes at a larger level. And so, I just kind of want to take you guys through, what you see here is not the full LDA team. These are only some of the strategists that had helped on that backend. So, these are the people that planned First Fridays, these are the people that planned the Concert Series. And they're the ones who are fundraising to make sure they happen. They're the ones who are contacting the vendors, the bands, and making those scheduling happen, so we can have these events in our community. And then, we have another slide of volunteers. And so, these are just more of them. It actually took me so long, I had to make two slides of it. And then, I really were wanting to put our, all of our volunteers up there that helped to make these things happen, but I figure I would just bring the strategists that have helped this, because it would take me way too long to sit there and put a photo up of everybody that literally volunteers to make that. So, I appreciate these people, they all sit on our committees, as you can see there, whether they be the Arts Committee that helped out with the Art and Wine Walk, or the Promotions Committee that puts on the First Fridays. So, there's, there's just a lot that goes into it, our concert committees that put on the concerts. Of course, many teen volunteers have helped strategize these things, too, and help us. So, this is where I transpose my numbers. So, you can see the numbers there for 2021 on top, and you can see the numbers for 2022. That actually should read 748 volunteer hours that were spent, because all of that strategy takes time, all the planning takes time, all the volunteers a day of takes time, and then, and the things that follow from that as well. So, if it really was not for the people investment, we would not be able to have these items. And I know I've said this a lot, whether it's communities, when you have parks and rec, you have a whole department that are, is paid, city staff, that put on a lot of events, like Albany. River Rhythms is done by city. We put on a concert city, series that is done, ran by volunteers, so it saves us a great deal of money. So, that's what you see there. So, the actual savings to us as a community that we're not having to spend out is about 10,000, just over $10,000 to us that we're saving, that we're not having to pay additional people and whatnot, but we have volunteer people, boots on the ground. And so, I'm going to get into the Oregon Main Street Conference. Honestly, this was a wonderful conference, and I appreciate the fact that our Downtown Association is part of the Oregon Main Street Program. During the pandemic, it honestly provided countless of information, if not grant opportunities, to help businesses and get the information out there. It provides a ton of support for this organization and additional learning and education. So, this is what a lot of that documents that I had given you for the, and we'll get into that, but what came from that program, to be able to people talk to us at that level, to kind of break it down into more bite-sized bites. So, but I gave you guys a full meal deal, so you guys can take that on your own time, and you know, and maybe they can even help us in the future. But first, I'm going to start with the award that we received at the Main Street Conference. I kind of played the sound, but I wanted you guys to see it, because it, oops, it does have the photos, it has the imagery of just the event itself, and so, it's about a minute long. So, if you just bear with me, we'll just go ahead and play that.
The Open Door Award goes to a Main Street that has demonstrated a commitment to creating an environment that is welcoming and inviting to all programs, outreach, or other efforts. The 2022 Open Door Award winner is Lebanon's Family Pride Day. A Family Pride Day Committee was formed and worked tirelessly to develop a vision for the event and culminating in a celebration of the diversity of family. Held at the Downtown Park, the event created belonging for individuals and families of the LGBTQ+ community and allies, grew youth leadership and involvement. It featured local speakers who shared personal stories about what pride means to them, in addition to music provided by local band Reptile Love Child. The event continued with a one-mile celebration walk, and the day ended with a feature documentary, Who's on Top LGBTQ Summit Mount Hood, narrated by George Takei, that highlights the emotional stories of LGBTQ's overcoming physical and figurative mountains. Family Pride Day created belonging by bringing nearly 300 people together and had more people waving and honking in support as they passed by. Social connection and belonging are a great need for all individuals. Living in a rural area, many are disconnected from services and resources. Family Pride Day brought LGBTQ+ resources and education in one area. Family Pride Day grew LGBTQ+ visibility and awareness, showing acceptance to the next generation coming out to their families.
So, yeah, so that was recognized, and they're at the Oregon Main Street Conference, and that was actually one, it was like I said, it's a first-time award, and I kind of spoke to that at the last council meeting. It was the first of its kind, and Lebanon was recognized for that. And it's going to be something that's going to be a year-over-year award, and we've kind of set that bar already. And like we did with our, some of our other awards that we've gotten in the past, you know, those are the things that people remember, and then, that's what the benchmark, if people not try to go beyond, because let's be honest, we like to grow beyond what we are. And so, that's what kind of, I guess, I have to say, that's kind of a feather in our own cap as a community, that we were able to gain a first-time award, that was, that is going to be something that's going to be continuous. So, that's, that's excellent, I'm super happy about that. But, some of the other events and some of the things that we have, we went over, and is our guidebook, the one that you guys may have seen for Main Street. We went through the building bridges between tourism and Main Street, nonprofit board governance, which obviously responsibilities of the board for Money Matters. And then, of course, not your grandmother's leadership, and then, What's Up Downtown, which is the one I spoke to about that inventory. So, for the guidebook downtown, really what they spoke to that one was that for us to kind of do a self-evaluation, I mean, I think, feel like we do that quite a bit. I know we had the ad hoc committee to even look at what we were doing for our 2040 vision. But that's just kind of what they say, you know, and I feel like that's something we do well with, is that reflective piece. So, but to continue to ask, you know, what defines and what makes us a vibrant downtown? To ask those questions, you know, and what are our issues and opportunities? Within that guidebook, it actually goes through, there are quite a few Main Downtowns and other, other communities to kind of see what the barriers and challenges are. And then, that not only are they recognizing what these barriers and challenges are by interviewing people and working with individuals, because they ended up working with many-chamber Congress, downtown associations, and cities as well, to kind of get a full scope for Oregon. But, when they came up with and found these hurdles or challenges to communities, they're coming up with solutions as well. So, that's what I appreciate about the guidebook, they're not just saying, we have an issue here. They're saying, well, this is what other communities, and evaluating other communities and seeing what people have done. Because I mean, one great thing, and what I appreciate within the program itself, is there's not this thought of, I have to keep something, it's mine, because I created it. It's no, this works, now how can we reproduce it? How can we make this work for other, I mean, we all recognize, we're not cookie-cutter communities. We each have our own flavor of life and culture and uniqueness. But how can we make certain systems work, kind of like traffic? We knew how to make traffic work within our cities by making it a linear process, so how do we make other systems work? Which I appreciate. And then, so when we're asking these questions, how we need to consider certain things, our livability, our, our downtown economic, and our city streets. And how do we continue to leverage what we have and build upon our infrastructures, infrastructure, excuse me? And then, and it's able to benefit, and that's why I kind of gave you guys this piece of that, that guidebook. And I'll be honest, I have not read through all of it yet, so if someone was to quiz me right now, I would, you know, say, look at the guidebook. But, that is something that's beneficial to all of us at, around this table, whether we are, you know, the council being right here, or I think about even some people in their individual functions for themselves, whether it is for, you know, nonprofits that are working together alongside one another, or whether, you know, it is for working alongside our police and whatever else. We have, there's a lot of us that have our stakeholders in this that can really benefit and learn from it. And what I appreciate is that taking this information here, and I've turned that information over to our Economic Vitality Committee for our chair, Alicia Rogers, who's actually with the city, so she can end up, you know, really being able to herself read over this, and how do we break this down to some bite-sized bites for our, for our committee to continue to carry out functions that can help with economic vitality and the growth for our downtown? And then, we also, like I said, that's one for building bridges to tourism and Main Street. This what building, go ahead, thank you. This was actually done, I'll get to this slide here in a second, but this was actually given to us, done by, it was done by Travel Oregon. And Travel Oregon has given us a lot of great information, kind of just what, and I kind of put this slide up here for you guys to see, because it does just show what the impact of what direct travel has done for Oregon, and how it's brought up our employment rates, our travel earnings, visitor spending. And, and the reason why you see the tax is from 2003 changed now, is because that's when a Touring Laws Tax House Bill had came in, was in 2003, and then amended in 2016, I think it was 2016, I should have put that up there. But, and the change that you see, why it being 121%. But, the reason why those numbers are actually really important is, as we know, like for travel, we see it as heads and beds. Well, the pandemic, I mean, and we know nothing has changed for us legislatively, obviously, the way that we define touring, heads and beds is kind of wet right now. But what the pandemic showed is that tourism, travel, that, and that's why those numbers are there for the direct employment, travel earnings, and visitor spending, because that's what's happening in our communities. When we hit the pandemic, and even now, when gas prices are really high, and we're keeping and retaining our residents within our area rather than them. and retaining our residents within our area rather than bringing people in for one reason or another, they are still looking at that as dollars being spent. They're still looking at that is defined as tourism. So we haven't seen a change, but there was, the pandemic did give an idea of maybe how does, what does tourism really look like, and maybe is it just heads and beds? Because it's not just that, because we can't, it's not, it was not necessarily, that measurable, that measure was missed for us for quite some time. And so that's why those numbers were up there, and I wanted to kind of share them with you guys. And then, this is kind of like building that bridge from tourism to Main Street. In Oregon, you know, especially, you know, we don't have, you know, big flashy things in our downtowns to draw a lot of people. We have a great, we leverage what we have, we have great assets, but we're not Vegas. We don't have the shows, we don't have the things to keep people necessarily, but we have, do have a lot of things, and a lot of that for us is to be, you know, more of like a destination of engagement. How do we, we need to be more mindful, and this is where the Promotions Committee is going to be able to utilize this information to be able to really, to make sure we are a place that people are not just going for a bite to eat, but are they going to do more things? And are we creating those opportunities and positioning ourselves well in that marketing to say, you came to eat, but have you stayed for the movie that's going to be starting here? Have you, while you're waiting for this, have you gone over here and maybe thought about shopping? So how do we really start seeing us not just like a one-stop shop, but how to be able to get people to go across down Main Street? And to be able to interact with other places. And then, the other part to this is, you know, our visitors experience support. It's not just about putting on the events, but how do we help with things like technical assistance? How do we have to have help with things like to help visitors? You know, we recognize things like wayfinding signs or things we don't have in our downtown right now. We don't necessarily have a directory where people can sit there and go to a centralized area. Granted, we're not huge, but those are things for people, if the chambers close, which acts as our visitor center, or, you know, anything else, that they, we can make sure that we're providing the level of support, that they don't need someone in an office to help them, that they can be able to achieve that for themselves. And then, just a community that keeps practicing engagement and, and helping other with the learning labs and assistance, and that is just for us in our continued practices, that we are, at least I can say for the Promotions Committee, is for the fact that we are continuing that education as we bring people on, as we continue to have events and continue to grow. And then, of course, our destination investments. We want to just make sure we're continually looking for direct grants to be able to help produce the things we want to see and done. I think of the grant that we received from the COG that let us do the Art and Chocolate Walk earlier this year, you know, to be able to get grants that help put on your events and people know this, if you can save money, that's what you want to do. You know, even if it's Family Pride Day, we were able to get grants and solicit promotions for that event, that we don't have, we use other people's money and leverage marketing in that, so that's wonderful. So again, it's just really those, how are we strategizing? How are we utilizing what we have to make the things happen we want to see? And you can get, go and skip right past that. I went through a nonprofit board governance, which is really good. Oh, you can go back one, thank you. The nonprofit board governance, which was really good, I'm not going to touch on it because there's nothing really there, but I just say, there is a booklet for anyone who's ever served or thinking about serving on a board through the state of Oregon that you can get, that kind of talks about what those rules and responsibilities for your nonprofits or board members. But the next one that we will go into is Not Your Grandmother's Leadership, the role of Main Street in economic vitality work. And this one just kind of is really simple in the sense of the fact that what we need to do is just ask ourselves, you know, what is important to us as a community? And where does a community find meaning and connection? The sense of, and the biggest thing that has been spoken to is a sense of belonging for people to, and that's kind of, I think, why also we got the Open Door Award as well, is that, because that's what, that was highly emphasized with that event, but belonging is huge for community culture, for people to come together. And so, we, to find those meanings and to leverage that and to bring that within business. I have to say, being on a Main Street, we have something that's different than when you go to a major store, which is that connection. That's you getting to know the person that you're working with, I mean, you're, you're shopping from, they know you, they know your family. And to have a systems think mindset, you see it goes from economic vitality down to human development, but really what that is, is talking about human development all the way up that leads up to economic vitality. So if you would think of it more like a pyramid, where your human development is on the bottom of that, because if you don't have people, you don't have a community to actually, to work around. You don't have anything to create the vitality that you need to see. So the people, the community members, they themselves need to feel that, have that human development side, so that we can move into that leadership side. And that leadership side, of course, there's all different types of leaders, but that's something we as a community need to be really working and thinking about as we grow, and I think of many different arms that we utilize in this community that make that happen. But then, of course, from the leadership, you can have your organizational development that leads to your, then brings more people for community development, and then your economic vitality. But we have to start with our base if we're ever going to hit the economic vitality that we want to see. And we need to keep an asset mindset. Look what we have, then look at what deficiencies we have. It's very easy to point out the problems, but unless you can come up with solutions to your problems, that, that's all we have, is just, we have a deficient mindset. So let's look at our assets, what are we doing right? What is going well? What has, what has been working? And then, if we do have to look, we are looking at things, because the reality is, not everything works right all the time. That'd be great if we all were just perfect, but that's not our lives. So when we do have to find that, let's look at our solutions that we need to have. And then radical collaboration, which is, which is huge, to recognize our own diversity amongst all of us, to then include what is missing. Look at our strengths, and if we have strengths, kind of like, I always think of like my friends. What I'm bad at, my friends are mostly all good at, which is great, because it just feels like it balances me out in life, and it's true. And that's kind of what we have. We have, and I think about the people I have in front of me here, like talking to the panel, you guys here, all of you each have your own strengths and weaknesses, but together we're much stronger. So, but there are opportunities when we work in collaboration for community events or initiatives, that we do bring more people to the table. This is a smaller table, only because we have certain many seats to fill. But when we come in with different organizations, we need to be coming together and making that collaboration happen, but to recognize maybe what's missing by first recognizing all the goodness that we bring to the table. And then, to be change-ready, this has engage, map, identify, collaborate, test, and measure. That right there is not linear. When we're change-ready and to be ready to engage our community, to map out processes, to identify, you know, people that we can have, like a core group to help move things forward, I think like the ad hoc committee that's helping to identify areas of our 2040 vision, we already know that we have to re-engage and test and try and measure things. So this is not a linear process, I think everyone here is aware of, because we've had a lot of growth recently, but this is something that it has been taught across the board, which is really great in the sense of all of Oregon for our economic vitality work that we're doing. And then, lastly, what come with the Oregon Main Street we had was What's Up Downtown, and this is the opportunity that we had to partner with Oregon Heritage and the University of Oregon. So the project, it focused on populations that are under 30,000, so that's us. And it actually worked with 33 other downtowns, not just Lebanon. And it found out, you know, it says right there, about 50% of our stores, our upper floors, excuse me, are not being occupied right now. And the needs that are listed that we need most of, we are in the national housing crisis right now, so we see, like, we were able to gain, LDA, as you know, was able to gain $200,000 from the Oregon Main Street in grants to give to the Jacola family for their upper-floor housing project they have for the Courtney Block Building, $100,000 to them, excuse me, and then $100,000 to the Lebanon Hotel. So that is kind of like, those are the things that we, we're working on slowly but surely as a community to start seeing that re-vitalization and change. So that's what that's kind of, that's some of that project is speaking to, is utilizing people like ourselves that are doing the work already, to kind of communicating to others about the potential they have in their own downtowns, leverage their own assets. And of course, office space and community space as well, because that's been big for most communities. And then, so I'm having to read my own slides, guys, I wish I had in front of me. And then the resource development of our stories. So what I liked, again, like this study and like the other one I shared with you, it found the barriers after talking to people, but then it looked at solutions. It looked at what we can do to overcome certain challenges that there is. And then, the upper inventory, that was the part of it that, and I sadly didn't even include a slide to show what it looks like, and you think I would have to show you guys, but I didn't, but that was actually the inventory part of it. That's where Lebanon came into play. That's where we met with Oregon Heritage and the University of Oregon to kind of design a, a sheet that has all that, that data in it, to talking about the building size, to seeing if there are vacancies, seeing its use at this point, too. So when our economic, again, this is for more of our Economic Vitality Committee, but when they look at like business clusters, when they look at who they're bringing in, or even when they are trying to maybe work with maybe someone who wants to buy a building, and to see what the zoning is on that building, then they can go ahead and maybe talk, have those discussions that are more real than just maybe someone has a pie in the sky idea, when they work with the organization, that they can actually know what's going to be happening and what they're looking at. And then, in one another one, we talked about this inventory that has all this data in it, from, you know, ground floor to upper floor information, is that this can be utilized for disaster relief. So when we have a full spreadsheet type of deal with everyone's information, and not, no one wants a disaster to happen, but if one was to happen like an earthquake, then we would have information of people who may have been, you know, occupying, because it has even like how many people are occupying a building, if it's residential use, if we ever need that information. So this is going to be utilized, and the great thing about this inventory sheet is that this is something that's going to be utilized for a lot of Main Streets. A lot of Main Street programs are not really wealthy, you know, they're nonprofits like ours are. We, you know, we run on a shoestring budget, like all nonprofits. So this is a tool that can give for other Main Streets when they're starting up, and they need to have a type of tool in hand. We've already developed one that can be used by other people. And that's kind of it. It was a great conference that we had, there was a lot that happened. We had a great third quarter that brought a lot of people in and attracted, attracted people. Now we're kind of dying down. I mean, we had our, from our huge events, we have one more coming up, which is going to be our first Friday. It's going to be a Hallmark Holiday, which is actually being co-hosted by our Bloom Boutique and Teahouse. So that's going to be a lot of fun, and then that is being worked on again by another whole group of individuals that I look forward to sharing with you guys in the third quarter. But I really just want to make sure that huge packet that you received was just that full detailed information, so you guys can read further. It has just the vibrancy, so if there are things that stick out, I mean, we, we say downtown's important to us, and so there are those things, and you're seeing it, please let us know, because that's, again, that radical collaboration we have. So that is all my time, and if anyone has anything, I bid you adieu.
Was it there a video attached to that Upper Story report?
No, I did not put, there was not a video, only because it was a lot longer than a minute, and I wasn't going to do that with you.
I'm not asking.
Oh, your, oh, video, okay, sorry, yes. There was a, so yes, so one great thing, thank you, is that the story was covered, the upper floor story project was covered by KGW. So they came out and they actually had done footage in the Wells Fargo building. And then we had our own Bill Fleischer, who's on our Economic Vitality Committee, kind of speak to the building and some of the stuff like that, where we had someone from Oregon Heritage, Currie Gill, speak to what the needs were, what the study had found. So if you ever want to kind of look back, we were really framed, Lebanon was framed in a great positive light by getting that coverage, which was excellent. Thank you for that. See, things happen and I forget about them, I'm sorry, I have to write everything down.
Any other questions?
All right. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate you.
Okay, next up, we have public comment section. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony comment card prior to speaking, handed to the city recorder. Each citizen is provided up to five minutes to provide comments to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to respond. The city recorder will accept and distribute written comments at a speaker's request. Public comments can also be submitted to the clerk via email. First up, Teresa Newman.
Hi, Mayor Aziz. This is my first time in person seeing you, and I've meant to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being the leader you've been. We need more leaders like you. I appreciate your courage when it came last spring to the pride situation here, and I just salute you. So I wanted to mention about the annexation, but first, after what I just heard, I'm going to represent the other side of this, and I'm not proud of Lebanon being known for that. As a Main Street, speaking as a Main Street American, I would love to see a common denominator that all of us in the human condition can celebrate, like celebrate our law enforcement, celebrate our veterans here, elevate them, the seniors, disabled, business owners, mothers, fathers, single moms, single dads. There's so many people out there that in the human condition, we share this, and I would like us to be seen more for that rather than controversial, divisive issues that most mainstream Americans just, I'm sorry, we're not on board with, you know? I, I don't want to see us going down that road. And so I just wanted to make that comment, because I, the gal that just spoke, she's very articulate, you can tell she's done her homework. She's, my guess is she probably has some degrees, which is very commendable, but I'm speaking as a Main Street American. I'm educated also, and I know that my opinions count. And I, like I said last time, I'm the voice of vision here. And as far as zoning and as far as what's going on in Lebanon, I have big concerns about all the apartment complexes going up, because, I mean, I have proof, I've done my research, it, it's a fact that, and you can have my notes if you want for my research, but the crime goes up when you have a lot of apartment buildings like that. So I'm glad to hear that the annexation you're talking about across the river has nothing to do with more apartment complexes. And I, and I like the fact that they're talking about putting a couple houses up there. But my question to you again, as a voice of common sense and the voice of vision, is I noticed last time I was here, they were talking about the past, and you know, what the demographics were in the past, and who we have to think about when we're building and zoning, and that's, that's low expectations. I don't care what happened in the past. We can't have low expectations. You've got to raise the bar, you've got to know what kind of city you want to have. Our planners, the people that founded the city of Lebanon had a vision, and I don't want to see that prostituted. I've been here 45 years. And so I, I would like to see that vision maintained. My question is, why can't, and I know there's probably a lot of reasons why, but still, there's so many options. Why can't you take River Park and turn that and develop that as an extension of the downtown? It's a perfect area, it's scenic, it's on a river. I've traveled all over Europe, I've traveled all over the United States, I've seen firsthand what happens when you, when good planners plan a city and they have vision, and they're looking ahead, and they're not trying to be, it's not about the, the profit, it's not about politics, it's not about pleasing different groups of people, it's about just being simple. I would rather see a development that had larger lots and smaller homes that were built nicely than to see what I'm seeing. And you yourself, put yourself in their shoes as a parent, if you had to buy a house or rent a house, or even an apartment, a condo, wouldn't you rather have more space? A smaller house? My husband and I built our place from scratch. We sacrificed so much. We lived without for so long, and we did it ourselves. And I would like to see people supporting people like us that say, you know what, we will develop a program where we'll open up some land, and we'll have a development that you can build your house, we'll help you. Help the, help the common people to achieve the American dream. We achieved the American dream. It wasn't easy, it took a lot of sacrifice, and there's people like me that are willing to do it, but I feel like we're getting, we're getting pushed out by a lot of other things that are going on. So I really implore you to set the bar high, raise your expectations, be creative, and have a vision for Lebanon that's going to last. And so think, I mean, just think about what else you can do, you know, what, and that was my thought, is with the park. That's a perfect place to develop more businesses, some really nice condos, have them be quality and nice. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say, and thank you for letting me say it. And again, Mayor Aziz, I just applaud you for being the mayor that you've been for this city. this city.
Thank you, Teresa, I appreciate that. And also, you know, just a side note to you, Teresa, a lot of the stuff that we do as far as our development in town is really guided by the state. It's guided by our master plan. So there's not a whole lot of wiggle room on whether we have new housing, it's going to be apartments or houses. It's very difficult, but the trickiest thing for all of us, I think, is to do it balanced. And that's always what I've said, is that we need to grow, but we need to grow in a balanced way and not too fast. And so I do agree with you, but I'm leaving. Ken Jackal will be coming in, and I think he'll be on the same track, so. Okay, next up is, is it Linda Ernst? Did I get that right?
Ernest.
Ernest, okay. Sorry. Yeah, come on, come on up and then sit right there.
Is there a question?
That's okay.
I've lived on Ninth Street here in Lebanon, off of Airport, for about 15 years. And I have a field right behind me. There's been some flooding in that field, quite a bit of flooding for the past three years. I want to know where the water runoff from those three-story apartments goes. Does it go in the creek, or is it supposed to go someplace else? If you don't know, can you find out and let me know?
Yeah, our city manager will contact the engineers, and she'll look that up for you and figure that out and contact you. And I have your information here, so she can get ahold of you, and your phone number and all that information, okay?
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Are you referring to Applegate Landing? Is, are those the apartments? Which apartments are you referring to?
Stoltz Hill Road.
Stoltz Hill and Airport.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know where they're supposed to put the traffic light?
Yes, yeah. The new, the new town, you're talking about the new townhouses, you're talking about the apartment complex at the end of the new extension?
I'm talking about the three-story town, three-story apartment buildings in, on that lot, on Stoltz Hill Road.
Okay.
Where does all that water go from the runoff, from the roofs and the parking lot? There's never, like I said, it's standing water in that field a lot of times, and it comes up to my property line and sometimes into my property.
Right.
And it's never happened before, so it's been kind of a problem.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay, let me set that. Next up is Cord, and I'm sorry, Cordaro Reed? Is that correct?
Cordaro.
Cordaro?
Cordaro Reed.
Come on down.
Woo, I've been sitting back there all day, all night, I'm just so nervous, my heart rate's at 110. This is the third time I've ever talked to a whole body before, and actually, the first time I've talked to a town. So I'm going to look at my notes here, and I hope you mind not my eye contact. So my name is Cordaro Reed, I live on Sixth Street in Lebanon. I want to congratulate the incoming council on a great turn, and having a great turnout. So thank you, Mayor Aziz, for your service. I know that the midterm has been kind of different, especially statewide, with so much money pouring in from interested parties. While it's not the outcome I personally would like as a resident of Lebanon, I know that the people's voice need to be louder than a select few who have money in this town, and that's why I'm here today. I am disappointed that Lynn County, a Lebanon residence, voted to prohibit psilocybin mushrooms, especially since they're a least harmful natural drug and can help so many with PTSD and migraines. The prohibition is going to, isn't going to stop use, and at this point, it's leaving money on the table for the city. The sales potential could have meant tens of thousands added to the city budget, operations, and tourism to enrich our businesses. The LGBTQI representation Lebanon will grow stronger year over year as young people and new residents start their life here. I suggest we listen to them and any marginalized group when they come to speak and become active in their community. I believe this town can be a beacon of growth and commerce. We're just 20 minutes away from OSU, about an hour away from the coast, an hour and 20 from Portland. We have access to many features and trails. Lebanon is a great place to call home. For many people here, I know it can be better. That's why I'm speaking today, because I want to make sure the incoming council members and mayor really takes heed of the Lebanon 2040 Vision and Community Strategic Action Plan, which you have the seven visions right there, yeah, for the council. So I'm, I love that. Over 1,100 residents helped create this plan. It's not perfect, but it is the input of thousands of hours, but it is, it's a good starting point. Lebanon needs to use that and partner with businesses, small and big, to make Lebanon a place to visit, stay, and settle. I'm looking at the Medical University, there's a reason they chose here. We should work with them and help entice those young professionals to stay. We need more jobs and activities to do, not just a couple summer events, and thanks to the LDA, Lebanon Downtown Association, they're putting on a really great job. That was a wonderful presentation. We have so much opportunity in so many empty buildings. We can start to attract and welcome people in to make their stakes here. We can be the city that Friendly has built. And finally, for those who wanted to serve, here's my message. Continue to provide the city with the leadership you would have as councilpersons, showing that, show the incoming class that you're more than a position, that fact, the fact that you ran shows your mettle. Keep showing up and showing out. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Keith Murphy. Hello, Keith.
I'd like to start off with something that Thomas Jefferson said. When they wrote the Constitution, which I hold dear. I, however, place economy among the first and most important republican virtues, and public debt as the greatest dangers to be feared. To preserve our independence, we must not let our rulers load us with perpetual debt. I am for our rulers. I am for a government rigorously frugal and simple. We're $31 trillion in debt in the United States. Lebanon is $50 million in debt, if I'm correct. You just passed, while I was here, you bought Avery Park, part of Avery Park, $65,000, and the other, I couldn't hear you because you had the microphones down. Our roads are falling apart, and here you guys are buying property that's not even in Lebanon. And it don't make sense to me. You can't even go down some of these roads. You put coal patch on some of the roads, they don't last two months, and it's gone. But you're willing to buy property all over the place. Why don't you fix these roads? I don't understand your thinking. But that's, that's not what I'm here for. I just, it just blew me away that you guys passed these two things without the approval of the citizens that pay the tax to buy all of this garbage. Number one, Stoltz Hill Road, and I'll just read it, you can, you can look it up if you want, it's on page three of three. You know, it's that, I think it's that 80 acres that's being built up, and you're putting a traffic signal on Airport Road, and you're putting on, you guys are putting in the water and water main and sewer and drain, is that correct?
Sewer, not water.
I'm sorry.
Water's already in place, it's sewer. It's the West Side Interceptor that we're putting in right now.
Who put, who put the water in?
The water was already put in by the city.
The water is put in. Water and sewer are put in at the time of development. What's happening at Stoltz and Walker right now, Stoltz and Vaughn, is the West Side Interceptor, which is a sizable sewer main that takes the sewage from the entire southwest side of town to get it to the plant. It's not tied to any annexation or new development, it is to serve the parts of town already there.
Okay, well, I guess what I'm getting at is, does the city put the sewer, water, and drain in, or do you have it contracted?
It's, it could be either. It could, the city could be doing it, or city and contractors, but in this case, I believe the West Side Interceptor's all contractors.
It's being done by contractors for the city. If you're talking about brand-new development, the developer puts in the infrastructure to serve the property, so they would be responsible for water, sewer, storm drainage associated with the property. Street frontage improvement, sidewalks, but once that is done, so when you look at the older parts of town, then the city is responsible to maintain and replace as that ages. Sewer pipes have a lifespan of 80-ish years. There are places in town where we are far in excess of that, so we replace those pipes as they age.
Yeah, that, what I'm getting at is, on new sewer line or water line and drain line, if you have a contractor do it, you have to get three beds, and you take the lowest bed, normally. Is, that's normal contractor bidding, and the bidder leaves a third of the amount of the contract. And I guess that's how you do it here. That's...
Your, your time is up now. Your time was up several minutes ago, I've given you a little bit of a grace.
I don't, I haven't had my five minutes.
Yes, you have. You've had five minutes plus about two.
Okay, well, let me, let me say one more thing.
No, you're finished. I've been very patient with you in the past, and I'll, I'll be as patient as I can, but you're done. Everybody else had five minutes and they followed that, and I would appreciate you doing the same thing.
Well, let me warn the people about this HGMO.
No, we're done. You're done. Thank you.
You guys, if you put it in where the children play, this UGM, it's in Salem, they have one in Salem, and there's needles all over the place, and there's...
He's referring to Union Gospel Mission.
Everywhere.
Is that totally, totally unrelated to anything word?
Yeah.
It's going to be here, and it's at Cheadle Lake, where the kids play. You guys better rethink that matter.
Well, thank you very much.
I just want to really quickly correct something. The property that was authorized to be purchased tonight is in Lebanon, it is attached to River Park, not to Avery Park in Corvallis, so just for clarification for the record. Thank you.
I was going to say that.
The park that was purchased tonight is in Lebanon, it's attached to River Park, not to Avery Park in Corvallis. I just want to make sure you understand that before you close comments.
Well, you're buying it for $65,000.
Just, just want to clarify that, so we're on the same page.
Use the money for the roads.
Okay, thank you.
They're falling apart.
Thank you. Next up is public hearings. The public hearing. Please, please be quiet.
Just for five minutes, possibly?
Take a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
She was the very first one to turn in a card.
I must, it must have gotten stuck together.
I don't know if he's talking UGB, if you read UGB in our pamphlet, and he's confusing that with Union Gospel Mission, because we're not, we're not putting a Union Gospel Mission.
Yeah, I don't have it. Must I drop it? I...
She was the, yeah, she was the very first one to...
Teresa was the first one that you gave me. That was the first one, because I had it in order, and I never saw that other one, I only had four.
Yes. Figured I'd get queued up.
Yeah, it was, it's like...
No big deal, no big deal.
I talked to her before, I said, can you slow down and get a little closer? Because I have artillery wars. And when she gets that machine gun going...
There we go.
Yeah.
Yeah. That should have been a 10-minute thing.
I think everyone in here is pretty...
I, I think everyone in here is pretty reasonable.
Captulation. Less is more.
Get a chance to get it before the meeting.
I was hoping we weren't gonna do the other 95 pages.
To call you right after, but I have a sum.
But you know what? I have a Meyer.
Out of school today.
Paul.
Taking care of him for a little bit.
Paul.
How was he?
I have a Meyer's cookie, so I feel better.
Hey.
Isn't that why you show up to these meetings? Oh, yeah, yeah, big bucks too.
Yeah, exactly.
Pre-CA program.
That school has, I'm a long ways in the short term, but really. There's, there's so much going on in public education that people...
That's better. Go outside, do a walk, wake up.
Big part of our decision.
Huh? Heck yeah. I mean, come on.
Want to get a cookie?
Hey, and I, and I made, I made quite the sacrifice. I had to clean the bowl when she got done.
I'm sorry, what was that? Yes. Is this mic on? Is my mic on? Yeah.
It's off too. Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Okay, thank you, counsel. So my name is Laura LaRocque. I work with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying. And I am here today on behalf of David Gilat, who is joining me up here at the podium. So I've submitted a memo to City Council, so you'd have some time to consider it before we come before you this evening. But our request is for proposed code amendments, both to the municipal code and the development code. So I'll provide a little context, and then I'll get into the proposed amendments and actions that we might hope that you'll help us with this evening. Can everyone hear me before I get started?
Yeah, maybe even a little bit closer though, just...
Thank you.
Yeah.
So Mr. Gilat purchased the property. It has been most fondly known as the Moose Lodge site, so it's a site just outside of the city limits of Lebanon. He acquired the property, I believe, near the summer time. And since that time, is going through the city, city's review process to develop that site. So it used to be in Lynn County jurisdiction. In September, the City of Lebanon annexed that property into the city limits. And we currently have land use applications submitted to develop that site for open storage, so parking of vehicles on an open lot outside of a building. Since that time, the former building, which was the Moose Lodge, but had just actually sent empty and occupied for many years. So the building has been demolished, the site has been cleared, a security fence has been put up. And there's currently a caretaker living in an RV trailer on that site. The fencing and the RV trailer caretaker have all been put into place due to security concerns. So when the Moose Lodge building was there and it was empty, it was attracting kind of vandalism, theft, dumping of trash, abandoned vehicles, you name it. Even once the site was cleared, there was still a number of things that were occurring on the property that he found was important enough to put up a security fence to protect that property. And also to have somebody reside there so that there was an actual presence on the site to deter those things to happen. During this whole process, it came to attention to David that there was some municipal code violations. So first, the fence that was installed was approximately six feet tall. It's a wire fence. It has some slats in it for privacy, but on top of that, there was a little bit of barbed wire. Because of that addition on the top, the fence exceeds six feet in height, and the development code says that a building permit is required for any fence over six feet tall. So when, in reviewing this issue, we took a look at, of course, the ordinance itself and the state law. So the building code provision, it kind of crosses into state territory. The building code and what the building official reviews when he has a building permit for a fence is provisions under the Oregon Specialty Structure Code. And this code is recently amended, so I included some italicized lettering and also the recent amendment to the Oregon Structural Code for your consideration. But in short, it allows local municipalities to exempt fences that are under seven feet in height from a building permit process. Specifically allows you to exempt wood mesh and chain link type fences. Yeah, I've kind of outlined a process for this, so if you think about it, a building permit is required to build a house, all right? And it's also by the city code now required for fences that are over six feet tall. When you're putting up a chain link fence, it doesn't really hold anything, and then there's not a lot of lateral pressure from wind that could blow this thing down. So really, the process of going through a building permit and an inspection, and some of the other things that go along with that, is really time-intensive. It costs the city money to have staff review these permits and perform the inspections. And really, the end game isn't really, in my mind, creating anything that would be more safe than what somebody would build anyhow. A person building a fence wants to make sure that it stands in the ground and, and can withhold some wind that occurs. So our request before you today is to amend this development code to remove the provision that requires a fence permit to be required. And then also amend the municipal code where this is also found, where it says the permit is required, to exempt these types of fences that don't hold any weight. You know, I could see a fence permit being required for maybe a retaining wall or a brick structure. But really, a wire fence is something light and doesn't have a lot of items that would be impacted by a structural force, could be exempt. The other piece of this is allowing a RV, recreational, recor-, excuse me, recreational vehicle to be used as a dwelling for a caretaker. So currently, this site, it's been occupied for many years by a person living in a recreational vehicle that's connected to well and sewer and has electricity. To be on-site is through security. It seems to make sense to amend the municipal code to allow this type of use to continue with an open storage type of use. So if you think about it, open storage, you're gonna have parked RVs on a lot. And the proposal would include is including a caretaker to also live and reside in a RV. And I outlined it further in the memo, but essentially, the position is that these uses of open storage are usually temporary. So usually, people utilize their property in the way that they can to do that. And, and then over time, they further develop them as market conditions changes, as utilities are provided to the site, any number of reasons. So before you today is a proposal for two amendments, amending the fence code provisions, also the caretaker dwelling in the city's code. We realize that probably won't be something that occurs tonight, but what we would like is you to direct staff to start to explore these, to see if these provisions are needed. And then along those lines is because these issues have come to light through a code conformance process, for you to also delay any sort of corrective action or penalties that would take place to this property owner, why the city researches and reviews if they would like to amend these codes.
Okay, your time is up. Can we go ahead and have you and staff take a look at those issues? I haven't even seen the paperwork. I...
Came in less than an hour before our executive meeting.
Okay, so there's no way we would've even had time to review it before this meeting, so we can have maybe staff look at it and see, and come back with recommendations to us?
We can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I guess the other part of concern is by the time the City Council meets the next time, there is a compliant action on this property that would, has the ability to impose fines to this property owner. So we'd really like City Council to direct staff to delay any sort of compliance procedure from taking place until the matter's considered by council.
I think we can put a stay on that until council has given us some direction.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thanks. Now Tina Corr. I think it's C O R R. Corr? No Tina? Okay. Next up, we are going into the public hearing. Okay. The public hearing for annexation A 2207 is now open at 7:20 PM. Our city attorney will go through the required hearing process.
Thank you. The City Council will follow the quasi-judicial hearing procedures set forth in 197.763. Their procedures are posted on the wall. And everybody, they're set out so that everybody has an opportunity to present their case and that we follow Oregon law to commence with the hearing. Counselors, counselors will announce any ex-party contact or conflicts of interest. We will start with the staff report, which will be presented. It should include information staff believes is relevant to the identified criteria from the city's comprehensive plan and land use regulations. We'll then have an opportunity for questions of the staff by council, and then we will open it up to public testimony. Audience may provide oral or written testimony concerning issues relevant to the hearing. All testimony or evidence must be directed towards the criteria describing the staff report or other criteria in the comprehensive plan or land use regulations. Please note that failure to raise an issue including constitutional issues or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, if any, accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the City Council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issues precludes an appeal to the land support of appeals. All witnesses will be asked to sign in with their name and address, and please state your name before you sign your testimony. Testimony of the witness, we will start with the proponent, or the applicant, and then proponents of the application. We will then provide an opportunity for anybody that's opposed to the application and rebuttal if necessary. We will then close the public hearing, and a decision can be made by the City Council tonight. With that, Mr. Mayor, you can ask for ex-party contact, conflicts of interest or bias.
Okay. Any counselors wish to declare ex parte contact, conflict, or bias? Okay, seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience that objects to the notice that was sent in this case to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case? Seeing none, will the Community Development Director please present the staff report?
Thank you, sir. Before you tonight is a requested annexation. It's for a 2.98 acre parcel on East Grant Street, east of Berlin Road, so it is on the other side of the river. The property is located within our urban growth boundary and has a comprehensive plan designation of residential mixed density. The applicant is requesting to annex the property into the city and would be accepting the initial zoning associated with that comprehensive plan designation. And so the zoning of the property would also be residential mixed density. There is an existing water line service that would be able to be connected with this property, so there is city utility service. There is no sewer on that side of the river, and so that would be something that any future developments would be subject to doing septic systems. There is no development proposal associated with this annexation, but that is how the utility service would occur, is through septic and the existing water main in the Grant Streets. There was a proposed, sorry, there was a planning commission meeting on October 19th that they held a hearing and found that all the decision criteria can be met and unanimously recommended approval of the annexation. So with that, before you tonight is a proposed annexation and initial zoning of residential mixed density, and I'm available to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
No.
I'm curious, how much city property is on the east side of the river?
That is a very good question. I don't know the amount of acreage, but quite a bit of the city is actually annexed. There was a previous application many, many years ago that was a proposed development on that side of the river that never went through. But the property was annexed associated with that, so a very large portion is already annexed.
Okay, at this time, I'll ask for the applicant's testimony.
Okay, my name is Laura LaRocque with Udell Engineering and Land Surveying. I am the applicant's representative. Kelly always does a great job on these overviews, and annexation applications are relatively straightforward, so I will not add anything to that presentation, but wanted to be available in case you had any questions.
Okay, any questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of this annexation? Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition of this annexation? Okay, the public hearing is hereby closed at 7:26 PM. All further discussion will be limited to the council and staff at this time. Any other council discussion? Looks like none. Will the city attorney please read the title of the ordinance?
Ordinance Bill Number 2022-23, ordinance number 2999, a bill for an ordinance annexing and zoning property following consent filed with City Council by landowners in said area pursuant to ORS 222.120 and ORS 222.170. File A 22-07, Big Valley Builders.
Call for a motion?
Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve annexation A 2207. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Next up, public hearing. The purpose of this hearing is to invite public testimony regarding the City of Lebanon applying for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant with Dev Northwest as a sub-grantee. The public hearing is now open at 7:27 PM. And the Community Development Director will provide the staff report.
Thank you again, sir. So this is not our first time coming to you with this proposed application. We have been a part of the Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Program since 2003. This is inclusive of several cities within Lynn County, and also the unincorporated areas of Lynn County have a benefit to this program. We are currently the program administrator for the current Community Development Block Grant, or C D B G, program that services the, the housing rehab program for Lynn County, and we're looking to do it again. And as part of the program, we partner with our sub-grantee, which is Dev Northwest. We have Liza available for any questions, if you have anything for the program, questions of how we've been doing. But for the purposes of tonight, the request is for council to authorize the submission of the application, have the city manager sign any of the required documentation, and assign Dev Northwest as a sub-grantee. And unfortunately, per all the requirements for C E B G, I have to read this lovely, long notice to you all. So, the City of Lebanon is eligible to apply for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon Community Development Block Grant Funds, come from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The grants can be used for the public facilities and housing improvements, primarily for persons with low and moderate incomes. Approximately $12 million will be awarded to Oregon non-metropolitan areas and counties in 2023, and the maximum grant that the city or county can receive is $400,000. City of Lebanon is preparing an application for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant from the Business Oregon for Lynn County Housing Rehabilitation Program, participation, partnership, that's the right P-word, housing program. It is estimated that the proposed project would benefit at least 12 persons, of whom 100% will be lower moderate income. A public hearing will be held by the City Council at 6:00 PM on November 9th at the Sandium Travel Station. The purpose of this hearing is for the City Council to obtain citizen views and to respond to the questions and comments about the community development and housing needs, especially the needs of low and moderate income persons, as well as other needs in the community that might be assisted with the Community Development Block Grant application and the proposed project. Written comments are also welcome and must be received by November 8th at City Hall. Both oral and written comments will be considered by the City Council in deciding whether to apply. We did not receive any. We did not receive any. The location of the hearing is accessible to persons with disabilities. Please contact the city if you need any special accommodations to attend or participate the meeting. More information by the Oregon Community Development Block Grant, the proposed project, and records of the past city use of the CBG funds is available for public review at City Hall during regular business hours. Advanced notice is requested. If special accommodations are needed, please contact the city so that appropriate assistance can be provided. Permanent involuntary displacement of persons or businesses is not anticipated as a result of the proposed project. If displacement becomes necessary, alternatives will be examined to minimize the displacement and provide required reasonable benefits to those displaced. Any low and moderate income housing that is demolished or converted to another use will also be replaced." That concludes my staff's report. Myself and Liza are here to answer any questions you might have.
Let me see how I feel every time I have to read that whole thing with the public hearing.
I am so, so sorry.
Questions?
Kelly, you have examples or of how we've used in the past, or how it might be used in the future, that money that is available?
We've done several projects with homes that require weatherizations, or replacement of windows, new heaters, replacement of roofs. Liza, who actually runs the program, would be far better suited to answer specifics about that, so I'm going to turn it over to her.
Okay.
Kelly, that was a great start. So roofs and gutters are probably the most practical and used projects for these funds, but we also do ADA remodels in kitchens and bathrooms. We replace windows. We remediate asbestos when it's found, and lead paint when it's found. We remove tree hazards. We do electrical work, repiping houses, replacing heat sources, and replacing flooring. And there's so much more. I mean, I could take an hour and list out all the things that we've ever done, but basically with the funding that we have from the 2020 grant that Lebanon sponsored, we've been able to help six homeowners. We finished six projects, and we've spent, to date, $251,988 of that $400,000 helping people. We have one more project that's in process, and then we're trying to get the next applicant to turn in their loan application. Hope that answers your question.
Yeah, it does. Thank you. Follow-up question to that is, how would someone who needs those type of repairs that may or may not qualify, how would they seek out that help?
So if the applicant goes to our website, devnorthwest.org, there's a page called Access to Funds, and then look for the Lynn Benton Lincoln Home Repair Program, and there's a preliminary assessment form you can click on and fill it out online. And if they can't do that, then they can call us.
They can also come into City Hall and have a chat with us, and we'll get them to the right resource.
I would imagine social services of some sort probably has your information and number to be able to refer people to.
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. And we partner with CSC and Habitat for Humanity sends us clients, as well as the senior social services. Yeah.
Thank you.
So do we act as the fiscal agent? And if we do, grants be as they are, who manages the administration? And where are we getting to that part?
We do act as the fiscal agents. Liza does an incredibly good job of getting all the paperwork together that we need to work through the state, and gives it to me in a nice tiny little bow that I then process through our finance department. So between myself and the finance director, we process the minimal paperwork that's needed for us to be the fiscal agent.
This is a pass-through grant, basically?
It is absolutely a pass-through grant.
So minimal.
Very minimal.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I need to ask, is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this matter? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this? Okay, the public hearing is hereby closed at 7:35 PM. We'll have the city attorney. Have the city attorney read the title of the resolution.
Resolution Number 2022-29, a resolution authorizing submittal of an application for the 2023 Community Development Block Grant and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Dev Northwest as subgrante.
Entertained a motion?
Move for approval.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2022-29. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes.
Thank you.
Okay, regular session. Thank you, Kelly. "Granting a non-exclusive franchise for IoT Fiber Lebanon LLC DBA, Santee M. Fiber." Brett Hurst, IT guy. Hello. Yes.
Make sure the mic's on.
Good to see you.
I need to learn how to run the system again. Well, thank you, and Mr. Mayor and city council. I am bringing a non-exclusive franchise ordinance proposal for the city of Lebanon for probably, it started before I even started here, 11 and a half years ago, so I think my predecessor, Tom Oliver, started this initiative, this particular initiative with Peak, to bring fiber to the city. And this ties right into one of our strategic action plans. It was actually item 13.1 of our 2040 city vision, and that is to provide access to reliable and affordable high-speed communications for the city. And while we do have fiber in the city, this is a proposal to basically bring fiber to the entire city. And staff's recommendation is to approve the franchise ordinance for IoT Fiber Lebanon. I believe that Rick Peterson is in the audience, and I think Rick has some words he would like to say in favor of that. Rick, go ahead. Yes, you're going to want to point back there to Aaron.
Point at Aaron.
Point at Aaron.
Exactly.
Great. Well, thank you, and it's a pleasure to be here, and I also just wanted to take an opportunity to thank everyone in the room for your public service. Really, really appreciate that. So just wanted to provide a little context to the franchise agreement, and there's quite a few names mentioned, hopefully not too many acronyms in there to really what, who the parties are behind this and so forth. So just to, just the top button, well, should be this, this guy right there, arrow button. Yep. Okay. So just a little bit of background to add some color to this. Peak was started in 1986 by the Computer Science Department at Oregon State University, so been around for a while. Later, Peak was transferred to the private sector in 1996. And in 2002, Peak was purchased by our parent company, Casco Communications, and rebranded by Peak Internet. And originally, when Peak was at the university, Peak was an acronym for Public Electronic Access to Knowledge. So there's some trivia questions in here. Today, as far as the ownership structure of Casco and Peak, they're one and the same, but we're a wholly owned subsidiary of Consumers Power. Consumers Power is a member-owned electric cooperative, so essentially, we're owned by the members of Consumers Power. And Peak Internet maintains a local presence with our co-branded office with CPI on Oak Street and also at University Plaza in Corvallis. So a little bit of background, Brett had mentioned that we've been working on this for over 10 years, and this will, for some of you are aware of this, and some of this might be new, but essentially, back in 2005, Peak acquired Valnet in town. That expanded at the time dial-up internet, DSL, and wireless services. We also partnered with the city and the Lebanon School District to provide a citywide Wi-Fi network. So that was about a decade ago. I think Tom Oliver and I sat in this room, and we did a documentary with Cisco, and Paul might have even been here, too. So a little bit of looking the wayback machine. And we've also, in partnership with Consumers Power and building fiber for their smart grid network, one of the first infrastructure builds was for the Lebanon School District. We built fiber to the Hamilton Creek School and to the Land Lab over 10 years ago. So that was really a foundation for what is a complete fiber network for the school today. The other important thing, working with Tom, who was certainly a champion for broadband and for the city, and I've had the pleasure to work with Tom in numerous capacities, but one of the things that we really realized was when the newer businesses were coming to town for economic development, there really wasn't the broadband capacity that some of these folks needed. And for those of you that had visibility, they were always a code name and a project, and you could kind of guess, was that Google, or was that Amazon, or whoever? But we really wanted to work hard to make sure that we had the fiber optic capacity at all the shovel-ready facilities throughout Lebanon. So that was a goal that Tom and I set, and today, I think we've achieved that to probably 90%. So these shovel-ready sites are also fiber-ready, too. So that's an important thing for economic development. And then, you know, one of the biggest testaments to that expansion was with the Samaritan Health Science Campus and Western University. And, you know, I'll lean on our dear friend, Shelley Garrett. You know, at the time, she grabbed me and said, "Rick, there's a rumor, this university's coming to town, they're going to need things you know about that I don't know anything about. I don't even know how to Twitter," right? So, you know, a couple of claim to fames with Shelley. I did teach her social media and probably others in the room, but the vision that Shelley had, she wanted to be prepared, so when the folks from Western asked questions about technology, that we were prepared with answers. And that ensued in a meeting in Pomona, and a handshake with Paula Crone, that we would build the fiber optic capacity for the university, and that was done. And that's history. So we have ringed that entire Samaritan campus with fiber, and we're all aware of the exponential growth that we've had in that area. And then, most recently, with the onset of the Mill Ray Station development, that was really our first entry into the residential fiber optic broadband business. And in the Mill Ray Station, we have a state-of-the-art gigabit fiber network for the residents there, offering speeds up to five gigabits, and it's capable of going to 10. So it's really a long-term investment, a future-proof network that's really benefiting the citizens there, and especially the folks, the professional people that are working within, in the healthcare system. Just another key point in our enterprise business opportunities, Peak was also one of the primary internet providers for the broadcasters at the Oregon 22 World Champion Track and Field Championship. So if anyone watched those events on NBC, that was going over our network. So that was really a big feat for our team. So, you know, with that, with the many investments that we've had, Peak has really proven to be the local partner. We really appreciate our partnership with the city of Lebanon, and we are invested with the city of Lebanon. We've enjoyed a great working relationship, and we're really hoping to foster growth within, in the city. Now, some of the recent expansion that we've had with the onset of COVID-19, I think we all realized how important it was to have a good, reliable, high-speed internet connection at home. And specifically, we realized this from our students in the Lebanon area. Our phone ring off the hook. My kids are at home, I'm working from home, my internet is subpar, I can't run a Zoom meeting. What are we going to do? Panic. So one of the things that helped with that is we were the recipient of a coronavirus emergency funding program. We received $1.2 million. We contributed an additional $700,000 of our own money, and we built fiber to over 100 households in rural areas around Lebanon to start serving students. That's also provided an infrastructure that we're expanding on today and continuing to grow. And the one catch with getting that money is we had 90 days to complete the project. So got a couple of my coworkers in the room that were part of that. It was a full-court press. If we didn't get it done in 90 days, we didn't get the money. So our people stepped up and completed that project for the students, and that's continuing to bear fruit today. And just a couple of pictures of our folks and that were involved in that project. And then next, we were also right about the same time in looking at how we could expand that further, and broadband in rural areas, and even in urban areas, is expensive. And we were actively looking for help, grants, and funding. We were successful in a $13.2 million combination 50/50 loan grant to expand fiber predominantly between Lebanon and Sweet Home, Lakom area. We'll be building almost 200 miles of fiber next year in the rural areas, connecting about 2,500 homes. So with that, not to be outdone by Cassie, I've got a little video, too, and this is just really a testimonial for some of our customers and how broadband has really changed their lives. So if this works, and if you'll bear with.
In communities like Lebanon, schools are kind of the hub of the community.
We are a rural school here in Lebanon. We have a high-needs population. We're a Title I school.
Majority of our kids are on free and reduced lunch. We're constantly trying to figure out how we can help kids be successful.
When school closed in 2020, I was scared of like what was going to happen, the unknown.
We were going to have to move to change our modality of teaching to become more online, and connectivity became a real issue for us.
There are kids out in the rural areas that had no access.
When the schools got shut down at the beginning of the pandemic, the students had to, you know, do their schooling from home and things, and we started finding that our connectivity was a little bit less.
I would work from 8:30 when school started to about 4:00 or 5:00 o'clock, just because it wasn't letting me do my work when I wanted to.
To see your child have to do that when they've already been thrown in such a huge curveball, very frustrating.
The kids who were rural were being left behind.
Families really needed extra support to get that connectivity. Peak reached out to see, hey, how can we help you?
We've been a longstanding partner with the Lebanon School District, goes back over a decade.
Peak was there to support us and work with us. By definition, that's community.
We learned that Business Oregon had a coronavirus relief grant, some emergency funding to enable the expansion of broadband, to help serve these students in the Lebanon area. The initial goals of the CARES grant were to serve 350 homes. We had 100 days to complete the project. Our employees rallied in a big way. They stepped up to the plate and worked tirelessly to extend broadband to our customers.
The CARES funding really helped give access to these families that didn't have access otherwise.
We had a customer with eight kids doing distance learning, and we ended up getting them a fiber connection there that was able to serve all eight kids on Zoom calls at the same time. And we did all the construction for them free of charge. It was all included in the grant funding that we got. Without that, I don't know if we would have been able to get them a connection.
The fiber service coming in was just really a godsend for our family. It's played a huge role in the success of our son continuing his education online.
The faster connection just really made it so I could actually work ahead now and not have those overdue assignments that held me back.
Having that fiber connection to these rural areas is going to give these families and kids the same advantage that these kids in town have.
I think people don't realize, when you don't know, you don't know, but like we were living basically in a dial-up world.
I'm really happy today to say that we have served over 550 homes, and that's created a foundation for us to serve other students within the district.
A lot of these areas are less than seven homes per mile. There's a lot of construction that has to be done to get to their houses in the first place, and it can be extremely expensive.
The CARES grant was critical to enable us to serve our K-12 students that didn't have sufficient broadband in their home, but we've only made a dent. The school district has 3,800 students.
There's still a tremendous need. We have kids that, right now, on average, are probably a good half a year behind in school, so having resources to be able to support families. So having resources to be able to support families is essential for us.
So thank you for allowing me to share that, and I apologize for being redundant in my remarks. The video kind of told the story. So what I also wanted, you know, I wanted to illustrate our long-term commitment to the Lebanon community, the commitment that our employees have to the Lebanon community. And the question that I get asked most often and have for years is, when are we going to be able to get this type of service to the rest of the homes within the City of Lebanon? And that's why I am here tonight. See the cute animations that are in the video. So here tonight to introduce one of the names that's listed in the proposed franchise agreement, and this is Sandy M. Fiber. So a new brand within the City of Lebanon. And essentially, this is a new brand for Peak, but it's really just a separate business within Peak by the nature of the funding that we're using to build the entire city. So essentially, under Sandy M. Fiber, we will... Go back one, sorry. We will essentially build fiber optic service to every residence and business within the City of Lebanon, providing affordable multi-gigabit internet service, digital voice services, people can port their existing telephone number, and certainly a broadband platform capable of streaming any video option that they so desire. The network itself will be owned by a nonprofit corporation funded by private bonds. This is very similar to the structure of Minnet and Monmouth and Independence, Utopia Fiber in Utah, and Yellowstone Fiber in Montana. It's a very expensive project, but we're in the process of closing the financing. Peak Internet will be the operator of the new entity and provide the same level of services offered to Pink Current subscribers. And for example, in Lebanon, those subscribers at the Mill Ray Station that are certainly receiving up to five gigabit service. Again, emphasizing we're a local company, local employees, local support, an office just down the street, and local engagement with the city and support of nonprofit entities with the city. And with that, just another note, you know, I heard earlier that the city had acquired some property from the State of Oregon. We also recently acquired the National Guard property on Oak Street adjacent to Consumers Power. That's where our current construction yard is located. If you see all the vehicles and the poly pipe out there and the fiber, that's all of ours. And we have also acquired six acres of dirt behind those two properties. So we now have the capability of a 10-acre campus development that we plan to expand for the two projects that I listed here. So essentially, we'll be, over time, moving our team from Benton County to Lebanon. So we're really excited about that opportunity. So when do I get it at my house? So construction will start early next year, and this is a 10- to 24-month aggressive project to get everything completed in town. So really excited about the project, appreciate the opportunity. Like I say, Kerry Posner and Matt Webb from Peak are in the audience, and you see a lot of our employees that currently do work out of Lebanon, they're active in the community. So those are the parties. I wanted to provide some context to the multiple names that were in the franchise agreement, the proposed franchise agreement, and also just some background on who they are and what the relationship is with the party. So appreciate staff's report and help with this process, and we're really looking forward to being more actively involved in Lebanon and fulfilling that vision that Tom Oliver and I and others in the room have had many years ago. So thank you for your time this evening. And if there's any questions, happy to answer questions as well.
Questions?
My only question is that when it is at a residence home, will they be able to choose between Peak and another carrier or only?
Oh, absolutely, yeah. And that's the nature of a non-exclusive franchise, and if I wanted to have my cake and eat it too, I would love to have an exclusive franchise and allow no one else in town, but no. I mean, you know, this is a product that stands on its own two feet. There are a lot of different ways to get internet into a home. Fiber, fiber optic service is the most scalable, the most future-proof way to do that. That's the way we serve enterprise institutions in the city today, and that's really important. This is a long-term investment and also provides the infrastructure. The key thing is economic development, whether it's new shovel-ready dirt, whether it's downtown revitalization, this is key. These are the type of capacity that's available with this type of network is key for economic development, and I think we'll see success with that in the future, and that's our goal.
Well, your staff has grown since the dial-up days there, Rick.
It has, it has, and I knew you, I knew, Mr. Mayor, you would pass the trivia test, probably, and you're right. And if you're curious, we still have 400 dial-up customers today.
Wow.
Wow.
Interesting.
Sorry, that was a little loud.
I'm surprised. That's frightening. Yeah.
Well, it looks great. And your guys' work, guys', your folks' work on the getting those rural folks during the pandemic was just amazing that you could do that. And I'm pretty confident that when you get it house to house, you guys are going to be one of the ones that everybody says, go with Peak. Because I just, I think that a local company, especially with fiber at the high speed, people, really the only other option for high-speed fiber is Comcast. That's really the only other option. So it'll just be nice that people will have a choice. It'll bring in competition, and it'll be good for everybody.
Yeah, and thank you. And that really is our mantra. I mean, by being local, reinvesting in the community. We're not an investor-owned utility. We're not concerned with the share price and the return to our investors. Every dollar we make gets reinvested in infrastructure or re-infused into the local economy, and I think that's key. And giving citizens the opportunity to make that social choice and who they want to do business with is key, and we're going to demonstrate that we're the best choice.
And your local support, I just want to say, is the best, because you call and you get somebody over in Corvallis. You don't get somebody across the ocean. And it's really nice to have someone that can walk you through some problems and get things fixed, so.
Yeah, thank you. And we do and will continue to have a business office. So walk-in traffic has kind of been, you know, not so frequent, you know, with COVID-19, but we're seeing an increase in that, and that's what we pride ourselves in, that, you know, if someone needs to walk in face-to-face and have that human interaction, that they can still do that today. So we will definitely be expanding that retail presence and maintaining an open office in Lebanon as well.
Okay, any other questions?
No, I just wanted to say really quick that, again, thank you for continuing to work on the 2040 Plan in your capacity as a partner with Peak. It's just, it's really important that we meet all those pieces, and I know you pointed it out in your presentation for 13.1, which is our under jobs and growth, and we need, you know, community partners and businesses just like Peak doing this work so we can continue to grow and continue to be a community that people want to join and be a part of. So again, thank you for doing that, and I'm really happy to hear about this non-exclusive franchise agreement, so.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate your remarks. This is also, you know, called out in the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments 2020-25 Community Economic Development Plan with broadband. So that's noted as well. That's a little bit broader scope, but it certainly fits the criteria for that as well.
Okay, we need to read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill Number 2022-24, Ordinance Number 3,000, a bill for an ordinance established in a non-exclusive franchise for IOT Fiber Lebanon LLC, DBA Sandy M. Fiber.
Entertained a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve ordinance number 3,000. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance has passed. And next up is leading into the next one, approving fiber network build in the City of Lebanon by IOT Fiber Lebanon LLC to be operated by Peak Internet. Brent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. And this is really the next step to the franchise agreement. So I would just, as my memo states, staff recommends to approve a fiber network build in the City of Lebanon by IOT Fiber Lebanon LLC to be operated by Peak Internet.
Questions?
Nope.
Okay, would you like to read the?
Resolution Number 2022-30, a resolution approving fiber network build in the City of Lebanon by IOT Fiber Lebanon LLC to be operated by Peak Internet.
Entertained a motion?
Move for approval.
They're gonna...
It's been moved in second and to approve Resolution 2022-30. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you all. And what do you think of the name?
Like it.
Yeah. It's a good name. Local. Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Sounds like a rope company.
What's that?
Sounds like a rope company.
Well, there were others, but they hit the chopping block.
Next up, granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural. Brandon?
Thank you. I actually gave Brandon the night off, so I'm never going to be that nice again. This is just renewal of our existing Northwest Natural franchise. We have included the clause about liquidated damages if they don't move their infrastructure for projects. They have not been a problem with that, but we are trying to be consistent across our franchise agreements. And then it excludes public purpose charges from compensation and a reopener clause for compensation consideration in three years if we wanted to do that. So pretty straightforward, got an ordinance attached, and I'll answer questions.
Any questions? Okay, City Attorney, read the title of the ordinance.
Ordinance Bill Number 2022-17, Ordinance Number 2993, a bill for an ordinance granting a non-exclusive gas utility franchise to Northwest Natural Company and fixing terms, conditions, and compensation of such franchise.
Entertained a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in second and to approve ordinance Bill 2022-17. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ordinance passes. Number six, repealing Resolution 2021-24 and approving Republic Service rate increases. Nancy Brewer?
Thank you. This is just the annual rate increase Republic Services submitted a request. There's a letter in the packet for you from them, and then the resolution that sets those rates for the coming year.
Questions?
I do have a question. You said annual rate. Have they been increasing their rates every year?
They have been. They have been. Their costs are going up. As a highly regulated entity, they are facing some of the same challenges we do with disposal, and they're looking for expansion on Coffin Butte, and it's just the whole waste stream that's going up.
They, just for a little history, context, you were going to do it too.
Yeah.
I mean, we used to do it, and they'd bring in an increase every three or four years, which was just monstrous. And what they did is they ended up going to a formula-based increase that takes like gas charges and gas prices and all this kind of stuff, and they factor that all together, and they do a yearly increase as part of the franchise agreement. So you're not hit with, you know, the huge one after three years.
I see. Yeah, and council was frustrated that, you know, are we getting good service? And then all of a sudden, they're raising their rates, but our customers aren't happy. You know, the customers aren't happy. So we went to this one, and then that way, we just have the yearly cost of living increase, and it seems to have worked a lot better.
Without the ability to talk to them about their lack of customer service?
No, they do come in.
Where are they?
Julie comes in.
She was expecting to be here today, but she sent me a note late this afternoon that she was not able to come. She and I will be talking, Julie and I will be talking after the first of the year about this new Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act. She was on a six-hour Zoom with DEQ with like 100 other entities today, looking at what that means for what they have to do. And I suspect she will be here to talk about what comes out of that.
Is this just residential, as I understand it, or does this affect commercial rates also?
For the, oh, for the rates that they're putting in place now? Yes.
Yes, which?
Commercial and residential, yes. It's all their rates.
I've got some very deep concerns about raising the rates, as you said, Mayor. Lack of customer service, failure to get things picked up, lying about things being picked up when they weren't. This is common in the commercial side. And I would really like to talk to someone about that before I vote to approve something like this personally.
Okay. So...
You're asking for us to pay more and get less.
So Julie Jackson is the Municipal Relations Manager. Her contact information is in the letter in the packet, and I think she would listen to those comments very seriously, so.
Just as a point of reference, one of the meetings that, when we were dealing with this, I brought in, and Jason Bowen brought in, video of our trash cans being dumped onto the street and thrown, basically, onto the street and just left there. And showed the video, and actually, things got better for a while, and then she offered to have counselors ride on the trucks and stuff. So I think they listen, so I think it's something that we need to talk to them about then, if that's the case.
Well, yeah. Prime example, the soup kitchen. We'll call to have the cardboard picked up. Well, we'll get to you in about 10 days. 12 days later, they still haven't picked it up. You call in, well, the driver said he picked it up. Well, you know, let me send you a picture of this thing. I'm about to build a cardboard fort in my parking lot. I've got so much. And so they usually turn me loose, and I have to call some other state. And thankfully, I'm an old retired guy with a full charge on my phone and nothing else to do. So I'm usually able to get through. But you cannot get ahold of anybody locally. They will not let you talk to anybody locally for customer service. Seems kind of counterintuitive to me. And I spoke with several business owners, they've had the same thing, and I just determined that I was going to bring it up, because we don't get often a chance to do this.
Yeah. Can we just put that on hold and then wait until she can come to one of the meetings?
Yes, I'll invite her to the December meeting.
Thank you.
I as well have the same concern, because I've suffered the exact same thing. And what my concern is that both like you and I have dealt with that. I think they moved faster when they knew we were counselors, so I wonder how they deal with the regular public.
They didn't know I was a counselor.
Well, they knew I was one, because I had to, because they lied to me too.
Yeah, I use my military voice instead.
So the concern, and I do know that they did take an extra step, and they've brought in another gentleman. I can't remember his name now, but he's been going around businesses and letting folks know that he's there to help, to help with situations like that. But he came to speak to me because, you know, my name's on the council list. So I'd like to hear from them as well in terms of how they're dealing with the regular public and what kind of response they're getting to the regular public, et cetera. So I'd like to hear.
Yeah, the issue was them rushing. That was the big thing. They were rushing, rushing, and they would go through the residential areas, and they didn't care where that cart got left. So it blocked traffic, it blocked driveways.
Still does.
And, yeah, so.
Yeah, they've replaced three of them, because they kind of release a little early on the way down.
Yeah.
And it bounces into the neighbor's yard.
All right.
They're also quick to pick up.
I'm a residential customer, and they missed my last month, they missed my street two weeks in a row, the whole street.
Yeah, sure.
Real quick, what are the ramifications? I see this is a request. Are there ramifications if we just say no? Okay.
We...
I know it's a loaded question, but what are they?
Well, I think we're in the second five-year term of, I think the, we're still operating under the 2015 franchise agreement that has a rollover after 15 years, and Nancy can correct me if I'm wrong. So we're in the second five years. There's a termination process every five years, basically, and we would have to find somebody else that is willing to come into town and do it. Certainly, there's other competitors, and... And, you know, we could do, search out, have proposals, all that kind of stuff. But I think that we're in the middle of the second five-year term. And under the contract, there may be ways to challenge the amount of the increase or look at the numbers, and which, you know, the city, I'm sure, has already done. But I would have to come back with a legal opinion related to whether we could terminate the contract before the end of the second five years. My, you know, my gut says probably not, but we could certainly look at it or look for cause. But at this point, we're 2015, so we're, you know, two years into the second five-year term.
Okay. It was just nice to know what the rails are.
We certainly looked at it a while. I can't remember which time, but we looked at other options and all that.
Yeah, I just don't want a rubber stamp off the letter without them at least coming in. If you're going to ask me for almost 10% more, at least show your face.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We will table number six until next, till we can get.
December 14th meeting.
Okay. Number seven, city manager's report. Nancy.
Oh, you have my written report. So a couple of other highlights. Just a reminder, if you weren't aware, the Housing Production Strategy Community Meeting is tomorrow at 5:30 at the Senior Center. This is an opportunity where members of the community are being invited in to talk about the work that you started seeing at the work session last month. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about police department hiring and vacancies. If you're not aware, our, we have 20 sworn police officers plus five sergeants that I think of as the people working the streets, not in the leadership team. We have five new officers on the street, basically since August 1st. Four of them started in October. We have one person who has retired but is working back on a temporary basis, serving a field training officer position. And we currently, as of today, we're down three positions. So with the retiree, it's really, we're looking to fill four more vacancies. We have a recruitment underway that closes next week. We'll be looking to see if we can get as many hires as we can out of there. But I think, for me, one of the things that is challenging here is assuming that we can get those four positions hired and working by January-ish. We'll be looking at nine of our 20 officers in the street, being here for less than six months, being in field training. And that really leaves us nine field training officers with experience and two officers who do not have a ride-along assignment. The short staffing is becoming painful. So Frank and I are talking about alternatives and what we may need to do in order to make sure that we have coverage on the street. We're working on some ideas and hope to come back at a future meeting to discuss what those alternatives are. It's not a pretty place to be, but it is where we are. And Frank and the officers that are here are working really hard to make sure that the community stays safe. So I want you to know that's top of mind, and it's front and center for Frank and for me and for HR to get people hired in and trained. We are facing the same challenges. Law enforcement agencies across the state are short-staffed. DPSST classes are full. I don't think we can get anybody in until February. Just, so they're in field training, but they still have to go through the official training also, and trying to get open slots is a good challenge for us. So just so you know, that's where we are, and that's what we are working on in terms of some concepts for how to best address that for the community. I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
You pretty much summed it up. I mean, we're short-staffed, but resources, trying to pull resources from everywhere to ensure that we're there to answer the call, it's a challenge. But the men and women there are doing everything they can to make that happen. It's still a road ahead of us, but we'll get there.
And that was it for me. I just wanted to make sure you all knew where we were on that situation.
I saw some of your new officers the other day. I just wonder if they know how to shave yet. I mean, they look so young. I don't remember being that young when we started, Frank.
You're just getting old.
I actually was, if you believe it or not.
I almost said, I almost asked him, one of them, does your mommy know you're here?
No, when they put you in handcuffs.
Please, I carry keys. It's nice to see, but man, I don't remember ever being that young when we started. That's wild.
You were.
You were at one point. Items from council. I just wanted to say, congratulations to the winners of the election. Ken Jackalow for mayor, Dave Workman, city council, Carl Mann, city council, and our Michelle Steinewald.
Still here.
Still here. So we'll have a really new council. And that will start on, not next meeting, but on the January meeting is when they'll get sworn in. So we still have one more meeting you have to put up with me. Other items from council?
Yes. In the past few weeks, I've been asked whether or not I would bring back proclamations if I win. I've responded with a resounding yes that I would. I responded yes because even though we have been doing them rather unceremoniously, they belong to the community and especially of importance to the people or organization asking for it. However, after some thought and some discussion, I felt that win or lose, it seems to make more sense that proclamation should be distributed, should not be distributed at the sole discretion of any one mayor. So this is my ask, to place an item on the next agenda to discuss the option of allowing proclamations or resolutions to be requested by the people and be decided by the people vis-à-vis the elected council via vote. So what could it look like at a council meeting? The request would be a presentation from the person or organization asking for it. They would have to be here. That would allow the council to ask questions and discuss and vote of providing it or not. The final step would be a presentation if allowed, obviously, if agreed. The final step would be to present it at a following meeting much more ceremoniously. The fact that someone asked for it, we should make it important to discuss and important to present it. This is the best way to allow the community to be a part of this and allow the community to hear how we feel about the item. I feel that this is how government really works. It's just on a small scale, being open, transparent, and by the people. So I ask, so again, I ask to place an item on the next agenda to discuss the option of allowing proclamations or resolutions to be requested by the people and to be decided by the vote vis-à-vis the elected council via vote. This similar is pretty much exactly what Dale Johnson did recently. She came, did a presentation, and we voted on it, and it was approved. So I'm asking that to be on the next agenda for discussion by the council.
Yeah, that's a resolution that.
Agreed.
Right. As opposed to a proclamation.
I think that should be for the next council to decide. I don't think this council should decide that. I think the new council, because those are the people that are going to be going forward and having to move forward with that.
Well, I wholeheartedly agree with you. I do think that it should be the next council that decides that as well.
I feel that the next council can make their own decision and whether or not they want to change that or whatnot. And I think that.
So if we did it now, it would be for one meeting?
So be it. However, the conversations and the way I feel about the incoming council is that they also feel that the people should be more involved. They also feel that the council and our processes should be more transparent and more of the people. And what better way to do it than for the people to decide through the council how we should vote on proclamations?
And they were newly elected, and those are the people who can make that decision.
Pardon?
They are newly elected, and they should be the ones to make that decision going forward.
And they're the ones that can change that decision if they want to. I mean, this is just a conversation.
Four out of the six counselors that are going to be on the next group are sitting here right now.
And we're not talking about making the decision now. I'm just asking for this to be put on the agenda so that the public knows that this is on the agenda, and they can come in and provide comments on whether or not they think they should have a vote or a say in, you know, more, you know, future resolutions. That's what I'm talking about. I'm just asking for conversation. I'm not asking for a vote right now. I'm asking for conversation, which is this to be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
I don't have a problem talking about it, and whether we decide to do anything with it is a different story.
Well, I agree. I think talking about it's important. I think that was missed from back earlier this year in having a conversation about, I think, resolutions is what we're talking about as a council, is something we can do. I just, I share Mayor Aziz's concern in terms of, you know, how long, if we did reach a decision, how long would it really last? I mean, so.
I feel it would stand.
That would be, again, a conversation that would need to continue through with a new counselor, new council and new mayor. So I support a conversation.
Yep.
Certainly.
I don't think there's anything too dangerous we can't talk about it. What we do with it is something else.
Sure.
So is that, everybody wants that on the agenda for next meeting?
I'm open to having a conversation. I just don't know what benefit it could provide unless it's just a building block for when the new council's here. But we've, then we've already had kind of preliminary discussion without the new council members that we're making decisions based on.
I think, you know, coming, it would be a building block is how I would view it if there was any traction among the existing council that's here.
It was a contentious issue. The election was ran on that issue in part. And I think that because of that, the people who won should have a right to say in how that's going to go. And I don't think that it's, as our council, I don't think we should be making that decision.
Well, I think right now we have three. I just don't know if Counselor Dykstra, or I don't know where you are with having a conversation, Counselor Salvage, Savage, but Salvage, sorry. Jeremy.
Yeah, I'm a little bit torn. I'm not opposed to the conversation. I just don't see, I just don't see what benefit it would be, it would almost be a disservice to the people who are coming in the following meeting to have that discussion without them.
Yeah. I think we need to have the discussion in January, not December.
I agree.
So we're not going to have the conversation? Is that what we're, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, in January.
In January.
So we won't have that conversation next month?
No.
Okay.
Counselor Nasar, I'm happy to bring this back up in January as an existing counselor at that time.
Okay.
In council comments. You have that commitment from me.
I just thought it needed to be brought up because the people are asking that their, you know, it's, one person makes a decision, and it should be a conversation that happens openly. And it just makes sense to me that if we're going to be transparent, and there's no, there's nothing in the charter that says how this should be done, right? And it was a contentious issue, and part of that contentious issue is because there was no conversation about it. So it may have still been contentious, absolutely, but at least it would have been a conversation to the people because it came from the people, but we didn't have a conversation back to the people. And that's what I'm talking about, being able to have a conversation in public, because we can't do it in private, having conversation in public. And if someone feels important enough that they need to ask for something, then we should have a conversation with them about how we feel about it. And I don't think that the new incoming council will feel differently about, because you're right, that the proclamation issue was something that they ran on, but it wasn't because of the proclamation, it was because of what it represented. I'm not talking about what proclamations represent. I'm just talking about having conversations with the people, in front of the people, for the people. I'm not talking about what those things represent.
We need the new people involved in that conversation. That's why I say January.
I think, yes, we have four counselors that are saying January, and that regardless of who is sitting here in January is the majority. And I assume when I bring this back up in January for a future meeting, that the support will be there from the counselors that are existing now to have that conversation with our new members of this body.
Yeah, I agree with you that the conversation needs to occur. I think we should discuss it in January.
Well, that's fine. I just wanted to bring it up now.
Of course.
Anything else?
I did. I had two things.
Procedurely, I mean, just from the charter, the city manager and the mayor set the agenda. I think it's a three-fourths, three-quarters of a vote to amend and add anything to the agenda they want to add. So that's just a procedural issue, so. I'm not saying anything other than, I mean, if everybody wants that charter, they're going to listen to you.
My hope is that I won't have to amend the agenda to put it on the agenda, that I could work with our mayor-elect to ensure that it is on the agenda.
Right. And that's what I'm saying, just procedurally.
Thank you for including that.
Discussions, and usually if people want to talk about it, they put it on the agenda.
Yes, I agree. Okay. I had two things. Well, mainly one thing, if we're still open on council comments. I received an email from a constituent, and I just want to make sure that this gets read on the, well, said on the record. It was about Nancy and Nancy's role as our city manager and just that she's been very responsive to the public, her presence at meetings and her oversight resulted in an organization that has really shifted its focus and is just doing fantastic now. And I think, you know, it's just something I want to make sure that was said, that getting this email, and I think it only came to me, about the work that you do as our city manager, it deserves a little bit of recognition. So thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Yep. I had something else, but I don't remember what it was, so.
I had one thing. I've been getting some complaints about the campers overnight in Ralston Park under the gazebo. I think it wasn't that much of a problem. We had such a nice, long summer, but now that it started raining, it, from the reports that I've been getting, it's kind of turned into tent city under the gazebo every night. That's secondhand information, but I just wanted to pass that concern along.
Thank you.
Where is that, chief?
No, I've seen them there in the daytime, but not necessarily. Well, I'm not there in the night, but I haven't heard of any real complaints coming my direction, but.
I know most times at night, you don't hear about it because they run them off. When I did my ride-along with them at night, they made two or three passes after dark to make sure that it was cleared out. So they do keep an eye on it.
Yeah. And I know we're working on addressing that issue later on in the next month, I think.
But we have the Houseless Ad Hoc Task Force meeting on Monday to review some proposed changes in ordinance language with the Boise case, the Grants Pass case, with the state law changes. Basically, people are allowed to sit, sleep, lie, stay warm and dry on public property. And so we are working on how to put together a plan for where and when that can happen and how to address that.
That meeting happened on Monday?
I'm sorry?
The meeting happened on Monday?
The meeting is Monday at 4:00.
Oh, so it didn't happen on Monday?
No, it's next Monday, the 14th, at 4:00. Here in the Saniam Travel Station. So we do not have any service providers in town that are providing a shelter or a no-barrier shelter or managed camp. And so we're trying to address this the best way we can in terms of public property.
I have one question.
Yes.
We talked several months ago about the new city hall. What's the status on that?
The windstorm last week did not blow the old city held down, and we were disappointed. Wait, no.
Leaning on the building.
And we asked Jason to come down with the big truck, and he won't do it. So ultimately, we have been looking at whether or not urban renewal money can be used to build a new city hall in the Academy Square area. And it can be and it can't be. There is not enough revenue stream there to fund the debt service for what would be in excess of a $30 million project if we did the Full Meal Deal. So we're trying to figure out how to look at some alternatives. Financing is holding it up in a big way. And there are not any easy answers, unfortunately. I did not win the $2 billion lottery. I would have been happy to share 30 million with the city to build a new city. I would have been happy to share 30 million with the city to build a new city hall, but I didn't win the $2 billion lottery. So that option, I did not.
I was going to say, you're a numbers person.
I am a numbers person. For years I've called that, never mind, I won't say that. It's, money is a challenge and there is not an easy or good place for us to get the resources to build a city hall that does not tap our local taxpayers. And that's the challenge. So we're working on some information to come back with and talk more in-depth about that.
Thank you.
And by the time we get back, it'll be more than 30 million.
Okay.
It's already more than that.
I remembered what my question was. At our last meeting, we had the work session with the housing needs assessment. Do we have a rescheduled date to complete that presentation and actually have the conversation about?
I believe that we are looking at a February work session that would be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to talk about that, that would have the citizen comments that are coming through and the results of the survey, the meeting that's held tomorrow, the data that comes out of that, and be able to bring all of that information to the council and the Planning Commission in a joint. Because there are elements that are kind of, you could change your land development code to change parking. That's a planning commission-led process if the council says, let's go in that direction kind of a thing. So thought it might be best to bring everybody back and have that in a joint session.
Okay. And one last thing, since I still have the mic and Mayor Aziz hasn't taken it away from me and turned it off. We do have the December 6th League of Oregon Cities Elected Official Training. And I know we have new members of council that have been appointed. I'm, in January, will oddly be the most senior member of this council, this body, and I'm still taking this training. So I really encourage my colleagues to work with Kim to get signed up for that training if you haven't already signed up already, and especially our three new people that are coming on.
I'm waiting until I get more official results.
Okay. Perfect. Okay, just wanted to put that plug out there. It's a really good training. I've taken it four years ago, but it's good to have the refresher, so.
Correct, there's a lot of write-ins coming in on Michelle's resume.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anything else from council? Is there anyone else from the public or the press that would like to ask a question? No?
It's the League of Oregon Cities Elected Official Training. It's for newly elected or any elected official in the state of Oregon through the League of Oregon Cities.
It is focused on city, as opposed to like a rural fire board or a county official, but it is focused on city councils and mayors.
We don't really need a cooling center right now.
Anything, anyone else? Okay. With that, next scheduled meeting is December 14th. We have a 5:00 PM executive session and a 6:00 PM regular session. And that will be our final meeting for some of us.